7:30 and it looks like we have a quorum. For the regular meeting for August 23rd, 2021. Amy, could you start the roll call, please?
Mr. Defilia?
Here.
Mr. Duffy? Dr. Fisher?
Here.
He's close.
Here.
Mr. Siano? Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
Mr. Beal?
Here.
Chairman Di Benedetto?
Here.
Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Notice of requirements, the open public meeting law for this meeting has been satisfied and a copy of the notice has been sent to Asbury Park Press and The Coaster and filed in the Ocean Township Clerk on August 10th, 2021. Board policies, no new cases moved started after 10:30 and no new testimony taken after 11:00 p.m. All meetings will be video and audio tape as shown on the Township of Ocean Community Cable Channel 22 and Verizon Bios and Channel 77 on Cablevision. Carried cases. Roosevelt Avenue LLC, Block 22, lots 11, 12, and 22 Roosevelt Avenue Ocean. Continued case. Seaview Accu... Seaview Accu... I can't even say it. Forget it.
Positions.
Block 141 lot 1 and 2, 2301, NJSH Route 66, Ocean C4. This application is for construction of 168 stall parking lot. Ms. Krimko?
Good evening and forgive me for my coughing. Jennifer Krimko, on behalf of this applicant and also on behalf of Roosevelt Avenue Properties LLC, I'm a Dr. Di Benedetto. Was that carried to the next meeting without the need for further notice?
I believe so, yes. Right, Ron?
It was.
Okay, so the date of that meeting is September?
27.
27, okay. Just because I know there were some interested parties, I don't know if they're on the line, I just wanted to make sure. So, back to Seaview acquisitions this evening.
Ms. Krimko, I'm so sorry, I hate to interrupt, but Mr. Chairman, a point of order. We have a new board member, don't we need to swear them in before we can continue?
We do. Correct.
Sorry.
I assumed he was sworn in, Mr. Defiglia, when he made the motion to adjourn the workshop meeting. My apologies.
Mark?
Yeah, I... Amy, has he been supplied with the oath?
Yes.
Amy, that's my email?
Yes.
Okay, let's see. I don't see it. I see the agenda.
Not today, but hang on, I can send it again.
Okay, got it.
Got it?
No, 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 I mean, I'll find it real quick.
And I'll swear you in.
Let's see. Please send while I look though, Amy. Yeah, I don't see it on the previous email. Then we have another one where we can do a repeat after me. I can do that, too.
Amy, you have that? Amy's muted.
I'm sorry, I got it. I'm sending it right now.
Okay.
Listening to my daughter in the background there, I'm sorry about that, but...
Did you get the oath?
Not yet, I'm refreshing.
To get it?
Not yet. You just put it on the screen?
Good, yeah.
I actually have it now.
Okay, so if you raise your right hand, Jamal?
I sure can. We just opened it up. I'm ready.
And read it, because I don't have it.
Not a problem. "I, Jamal Beal, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people. I do further solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all of the duties of the position of Class 4 member of the Township of Ocean Planning Board with the township of Ocean according to the best of my ability, so help me God."
Congratulations. Wish I remember the...
Now, Mr. Steinberg, another point of order, which you are not aware of. I was not sworn in at the last meeting because I was not there as the board's planner. And since it was a new year, I have my oath in front of me, I should probably do that now also.
Yes, and was Ben sworn in?
I was, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go ahead. Yes, I didn't know I was at the last meeting.
I know you didn't know, and I just thought about it now.
Raise your right hand and swear.
"I, James W. Higgins, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people and all that. That all testimony that I shall provide during all hearings throughout my term shall be under oath and therefore will be under a legal obligation to speak the truth at all times. I do further solemnly swear I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the Township of Ocean Planning Board Planner according to the best of my ability, so help me God." And I will sign this and get it back to Amy tomorrow.
Ron, do I have to swear in for my new term, or no?
Yes.
Amy, could you send it to me, too?
See what you did, Ed. Ed just made a firestorm.
It's all right.
I'm sorry, I need to learn to just, you know, sit here and smile.
No, no, no. Technically, everybody should be sworn in.
While this is going on?
I only have one for Dave Fisher. I don't have one for...
Is your term finished, last term?
I don't, as Chairman, I don't think it'd be sworn in as Chair, just as a member. You're already sworn in, then you're in. Ms. Krimko, Mr. Krautler's here, I'd like you to repeat the Roosevelt Avenue, what's going on with that?
Yes, so, Mr. Chair, as you'd indicated, Roosevelt Avenue Properties LLC is being adjourned to the board's meeting of September 27th, 2021 at 7:30 p.m. here on Zoom, no further notice. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Ron.
No problem.
May I proceed? Ed, anything else? We good?
We're good, Ms. Krimko.
And thanks, everybody. So, the board members, at the last meeting, we basically provided all our testimony and went through and resolved just about everything. There was one outstanding item, and there were at least two board members that had concern with the placement of our northern driveway out of the new parking lot and how it interacted with the existing Ring Road and Ring Road West and that it was going to create a safety hazard with the vans attempting to cross over the Ring Road in order to get to the site. So, as a result, we submitted a revised layout plan, which I'd like to move in. It was, well, it's not the fully engineered with regard to grading and drainage, it's for circulation purposes. I did have it in 10 days in advance, I'd like to move that in as a six, I believe I left off with Amy.
Yeah.
Okay, and that is prepared by Colliers Engineering and it is dated 8/13/21, and I will share it on my screen in a moment. I have Patrick Lyneum, who's here to testify as to the changes to the plan, as well as we did bring Alan Lothian, a licensed engineer who specializes in traffic engineering, to offer testimony with regard to the safety. And as one last point, Mr. Defiglia threw all of the attorneys on the call into a tailspin at the last meeting by raising the, I don't remember what it's called now, I have to open it, unless, Ed, you want to remind me real quick? The environmental justice law. And what we did was, we had our LSRP reach out to the DEP to determine whether or not it applied here, and we did get a response indicating that it does not apply to this particular application. I did submit that email both to Ron and to Mr. Matlack for the file, so it was there for resolution compliance, but I figured, since I can't email you directly, I wanted to let you know.
I appreciate clarifying that, thank you.
No problem. So, if I may, Chair Di Benedetto, if I could reintroduce Patrick Lyneum, he was sworn in the last meeting and he does remain under oath. And hopefully, we've done this enough times, yep, that Amy has let me share my screen. Patrick, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, so as I said, you remain under oath from the last meeting. I introduced the exhibit that I just moved in as a six, and just to correct what was on the agenda, it is now no longer 162 space, now it's 156 spaces. So, Patrick, why don't you go through the changes and I'll try to point them out as you go along to address the concerns that were raised at the last meeting.
Right, so to address the concerns at the last meeting, we look at multiple locations along Ring Road.
Patrick, I need to fix, now I have to have a point of order, Mr. Chair, Doctor Chair. Did you listen to the tape at the last meeting and sign a certification?
I did.
Okay, great, I just wanted to put that on the record. And did Mr. Beal?
Mr. Beal did also.
Fantastic. Thank you, my apologies, Patrick, go ahead.
Okay, so we looked at a couple locations along this portion of the lot, along the Ring Road, and the best location we found was to put it at the southern portion of the property. Also, considering the site visibility at that location, we restricted the egress movement to a right turn only movement. And then also, we provided left turn lanes along the center of the Ring Road.
Well, before we get to that, while we're talking about this, so just to refresh the board, this is where the vans would come, so in the morning, when they left the parking lot, they would only be allowed to make a right turn out, so there'd be no conflict with them trying to jump over traffic to make that left turn, is that correct?
That is correct, and you can, you will also notice that there are some parking spaces missing right near the driveway, and that is to accommodate the elevation change, the grading in that location.
Okay, and while we're on it, in an effort to ensure that there would be no traffic issue on the Ring Road when the vans are being returned in the evening, should they be heading south on the Ring Road, you've also provided for a dedicated left turn lane with a bypass through lane heading south on the Ring Road for the vans returning to the site and wanting to turn left in, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so the vans would exit by making a right, and they would have two choices. They could use this here, what I'm pointing at, is that what you mean by the dedicated left turn?
That's dedicated left turn lane into the first driveway into the the distribution, yeah, the main parcel. And then if that queues up at that left turn lane, they have the option to make another left turn lane at the next Ring Road driveway.
Okay, and these left turn lanes would not be reserved just for the van driver, so this is actually an enhancement that will be available to anyone visiting the shopping center at any time.
That is correct.
Okay, and if the board were to approve this plan, this layout and vote in favor tonight, would you be agreeable to providing a fully engineered plans to address any stormwater management or grading concerns that the board engineer may have?
Yes.
Okay, and you'd indicated that we are now proposing 156 spaces.
Correct.
Okay, and the location of the driveway also had the ability, due to the slope, to lower a portion of the wall that is over in front of the basin.
Yes, that is correct.
So, how do they, how do the vans get to the, what's the route the vans take to get to the loading area?
So, but I'm pointing it out, they would come out of here, and instead of, originally, you see where my cursor is?
Yeah.
Originally, they were going to go across the traffic to make the left turn in here. Now, they're going to make a right turn, and they're going to have a choice. They can either turn left in here or continue straight and make the left turn here. But we do have the traffic engineer here to talk about it, he is not only a traffic engineer, but he's intimately familiar with Amazon's practice, and he can speak a little more clearly than Patrick was able to at the last meeting with how the number of vans and how that flow would happen over a period of time.
How come you took away the screen?
Oh, because I wanted to see who was talking to me, I'm sorry, Mr. Weinstein, I'll put it back up. I can't see, I can't see you and the screen at the same time.
Okay.
But I can't see you anyway, Jeff, you disappeared.
All right, I'm going to come back on, because I know how much you miss seeing me.
Well, you know, you got a nice face, you might as well show it.
So, why would somebody, why would one of the vans go all the way up to the top? Why would that occur?
Well, a couple reasons. The first one is that if they're supposed to be loading here, it might be an easier movement for them. I'm going to let Alan speak about it. And then secondly, if they're coming out of here and there's a queue here waiting for them to turn a left turn, they might prefer to keep the traffic going as opposed to queuing up in here while they wait for cars to turn left in here. So, it's just giving them the option to spread out the turns.
Okay. Sorry for interrupting.
No, that was really the conclusion of Patrick's testimony, recognizing that the board wanted to hear from the traffic engineer specifically. This is just as to the revised layout. So, are there any questions just with regard to what's being proposed with the revised layout?
I, you know, I was, I'm sorry I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I had a few questions, I took some notes, and I just wanted to ask a few questions. So, my first question would be to the retaining wall. I understand it's quite large. Is there going to be a fencing put across there for safety, just in case someone would possibly fall off the wall?
There is, Dr. Di Benedetto, and that was in the notice and was testified to at the last meeting, there has to be. And so, the height of the wall is the combined of those two.
Okay, my next question is, is that would there be some type of gate or something installed on the entrance to this parking lot, so that the general public is not driving in there?
Well, we talked about that last time, you said that that was not going to be blocked off.
No, right, and I think that the test on is it won't be blocked off a couple of things. One, I think it would, we agreed that it would be signed that it was for the Amazon employee use only. And two, at drop-off and pickup, there was testimony and it was in the, I believe it was in the summary, there are actually lot stewards that direct the various vans and the loading and the unloading and the dropping off of the cars. So, there's actually personnel in that lot at that time.
Okay. You mentioned that from the tape, you have 132 vans, and 24 of them are in four shifts, is that correct?
I believe so.
And so, that's, according to my math, that's 98 vans. What are the other 34 vans for?
I'm going to defer to Alan, he's the traffic engineer, is intimately familiar. So, if you could hold that until we get to the traffic engineer.
Okay, and then where did the vans get fueled?
I'm going to defer to Alan again, I'm presum, not here, so I'm presuming at local gas stations or if Amazon has a fuel servicing location somewhere, but not on site.
Okay. That's all I had for that.
How did the vans, after they get the load, where, how are they exiting the, after they get the load, how they exit?
Unfortunately, Mr. Weinstein, that was all part of the testimony when we got the approval for the site plan. The main parcel, this is just the out parcel portion of it. So, that's already been approved. I don't recall off the top of my head.
I don't remember, I don't remember either, yeah.
But that's, that was already approved.
Because I thought at the, I thought at the last meeting, we were having a problem with how they were, how they were exiting out of the facility.
No, I don't believe so. I think the issue that was raised was how they were exiting out of our lot and crossing over that Ring Road. And I believe there was testimony from a board member that that's a mess. So, we eliminated that mess by not having the connection there, although it was at the suggestion of the board.
Does any of my colleagues remember that? Ed?
I was, I thought it was only about the exiting where the driveway or the the exit was at the north part of the parking lot. And I'm glad that you guys moved it to the south part.
And again, Mr. Weinstein, the vans exiting the parcel itself, again, was all part of the original approval. So, it wouldn't even be subject to this, we're really only asking to park them in a different location.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
May, Mr. Chairman, oh, I'm sorry, Doctor Chair. Would you like to open this to the public for questions for this witness?
My board members, if they have any other questions with this new layout. Okay.
Yeah, I actually, I don't want to throw a monkey wrench into this, but I'm looking at the plan now. The original approved plan, Jennifer, there are van parking spaces, a number of them on that original approved plan. What's going to happen to them? Are they just going to sit there as oversized parking spaces?
Yeah, they're just going to be parking spaces for the public or people who come there, or if a van is stopping in there and it isn't their turn to line up, I suppose that they could park there as well.
Okay.
We're not proposing any changes to the striping for the approved plan at this point.
Okay.
Okay, so now we'll ask if there's anyone from the public to have any questions to the new plan. Okay, Jennifer, continue.
Thank you, I'd like to introduce, hopefully, so there, there is Alan Lothian, have him sworn, he was not sworn at the last meeting, and since he's a new witness, I'd like to take a moment to offer his qualifications as well.
Mark?
Okay, and you know, believe it or not, on the Board of Adjustment, the Chairman does, that's why I was referring to you. Please, no, it's fine, Mr. Lothian raised your right hand, you're standing square, tell the truth, it'll be nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you, and Alan, just state your name for the record.
Alan Lothian, A-L-A-N-L-O-T-H-I-A-N.
And Alan, if you could just give the board the brief benefit of your work and educational experience that qualifies you as a traffic engineer.
Okay, I have a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from Rutgers, a Master's of Science in Transportation from NJIT. I've been working as a traffic engineer at Langen for over 23 years. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey in good standing, and I've testified before dozens of boards throughout the state.
And you're currently with Colliers Engineering? Or no, you're with Langen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we'll accept him, his qualifications, Jennifer.
Thank you, so Alan, let's start with their first question, their last question first is, the testimony was that there's typically four shifts of 24, and that doesn't add up to the 132 vans, so where is that discrepancy?
Well, it's actually 107 vans, the third shift is in a full 24 shift. So, there's essentially four, four different dispersing of traffic, of the vans. The majority of them are 24, the maximum that can exit is 24 at a time, and that happens about every 20 minutes during that exiting time period, and the last, the last shift doesn't have a full 24 vans. So, that's where the discrepancy comes in.
So, go ahead, I'm sorry, so you're...
And what I was just going to say, when you say every 20 minutes, meaning it's not 24 vans all at once, it's those 24 vans come out over a period of 20 minutes.
Yeah, so they load in, they go into the staging area and the loading area during a course of 20-minute time period. So, 24 vans will go into the staging area over a period of 20 minutes, they'll then cycle into the loading area, and then they'll exit as soon as they're loaded up.
Okay, I think that you made the discrepancy worse, Alan, not better, in that the testimony was, and what was submitted, was that there are 132 vans total. And then the breakdown was based on the four shifts of 24 vans for each shift, and I think what the Chair is saying is that adds up to less than the 132 vans, is that correct? Joe?
Yes, yeah, so now Alan is saying there's 107 vans, is that correct? And our...
Yeah, I think his math was wrong, I think he meant 97 vans that would be coming out, 24, 24, 24, and 22, that's my understanding.
Right, so then the other vans might just be sitting in the parking lot and not be used, so it's not all 132 were used every day, every shift? Alan?
No, again, based on the traffic projections for this particular facility, on a typical day, there would be 107 vans going out during that time, during that 10 to 11:30 time period.
So, is there, are you saying that there are more than four shifts?
Four and a half shifts, I would say.
So, there'd be more than, more than four shifts, correct?
Yes, approximately four and a half shifts.
So, it would be five shifts, just because the fifth one doesn't have as many as 24?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Alan, turning to what we moved in as a six in evidence, and I'm going to call it back up on the screen now. From a traffic engineer, what I failed to ask Patrick, when he was designing this before finalizing the design, he actually consulted with your office, you reviewed this. You and/or your partner, who's also a traffic engineer, offered comments and adjustments and red lines that resulted in this plan, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, from your perspective, is this an efficient and safe access to and from this out parcel lot for these vans to access the main parcel?
Yes, it is, so this alternative access plan, it continues to provide safe and efficient access, and we feel that it addresses the concerns of the board at the previous hearing.
Okay, and would you agree that to the extent that more than two or three vans are trying to turn left at once, typically the van would just bypass this left turn lane and go around to avoid having to be in a queue? Is that how it would typically work here?
If in a rare circumstance, there would be a queue at that left, that northbound left turn at the first driveway location, then they would continue on, just to keep things flowing out of the site. You know, time is everything with this, with this user, and there is an efficient access using that northern driveway as well. And, you know, you could stack up approximately six vans in that northern left turn lane. You stacked approximately three in the southern one, but at any given time, we don't anticipate that there would be vans stacked in that location. And that would only be during the times, that 10 to 11:30 time period typically, where there's the vans exiting the facility.
And Alan, you'd heard me indicate in my lay opinion that this would be a benefit for the overall function and circulation of the shopping center because these dedicated left turns would be able to be utilized by any patrons or employees of the shopping center. Would you agree with that from an expert perspective?
Yeah, so we look at this... Yeah, so we we look at this as as a benefit, especially going from Ring Road East to Ring Road West, uh, towards the Costco. Uh, it provides that left turn. Right now, it's two really wide lanes, one going northbound, one going southbound. Providing that left turn allows for the any, any vehicles that are turned left towards the Costco to to stack up and for free flow along, uh, Ring Road East.
Mr. Lothian, I have a question. Um, you said, I'm sorry, can you repeat? How many vans can stack in each of these left lanes?
Approximately, uh, approximately three in the southern left turn lane and approximately six in the northern.
Okay, is it, is it a concern that if if you get more than three vans stacking in that southern left turn lane, that they're going to start stacking into the the through lane?
No, there's, there's no concern because anyone coming out of the the accessory lot that that we're proposing, uh, they can see, and they could see what's happening to the to the east. So if if they see that as backed up, they're they're either A, not gonna exit the lot, or B, they're going to exit and go up to the, uh, it, these are, these are drivers that are there on on a typical basis. They know the flow. They know what they need to do to get their vans to the staging area in in a safe and efficient manner.
Okay. Do you anticipate that that is, that that's enough stacking for for those left turn lanes?
I I think it's I think it's excessive stacking.
Vans at for, at a time, right?
Yeah, yeah. And and it's and it's not twenty-four vans all at once. They they come out a- as a driver comes to the site, they get into the, they they park their car, get into a van, and over twenty minutes, they're making their way over to that staging area.
Okay.
So, um, I thought from the tape, you, uh, Jennifer, last meeting, uh, the time was from nine-thirty to eleven. And, um, Mr. Lothian is saying now it's ten to eleven-thirty.
Um, we have on what we submitted in writing.
You you are correct, Joe. That's what was discussed on in the last meeting.
It's what we put in writing. It was at approximately ten o'clock. If we are three more times. I'm sorry, I'm just going through what it says. Uh, I'm just looking for the first time. It, no, it said it started at nine-thirty. They're parked overnight from nine to nine-thirty. Then the first group goes out at nine-thirty, and then it's repeated three more times. So at approximately ten AM, another group would go and another group would go uh, until the last group, I think it was eleven, eleven-thirty.
Right, so Mr. Lothian is saying now that it's every twenty minutes, and it's not every half hour, and it's five shifts starting at ten. Is that correct? Or is it still at nine-thirty?
They start, they start showing up to the site. Uh, the drivers start showing up to the site approximately nine, nine-thirty. Uh, and then they get into their vans and start making their way over to the staging area. And the first van doesn't leave until approximately ten o'clock.
The staging area.
From the loading area. So there's a staging area where where they wait to get into the loading area. Uh, so from the loading area, it's approximately ten o'clock.
I think to to clarify, there the test of the testimony adjusts three different things, and I'm I called this down to see who was talking. I'm gonna put it back up. Um, when we talked about nine to nine-thirty, there was testimony, that's when they arrived here. Okay, the first van stacked uh, to to pick up their load here at nine-thirty, and then they got loaded up. And then I think, Alan, you're saying that they don't leave the site till ten o'clock. Is that correct?
Yeah, approximately ten o'clock.
Right. So I think that's the three different numbers that was confusing. I apologize.
I just, I guess I was just trying to find out how they're leaving the parking lot, this proposed parking lot. That's all.
This, this, right. So how they're leaving this proposed parking lot is going to be in groups of twenty-four over twenty-minute period every half hour. So there'll be twenty minutes that they go, and then there'll be a ten-minute break, and then they'll start moving over again.
Okay, that clarifies it. Thank you very much. There was a a crosswalk that was on the original plan. Has that been removed?
That's been removed. That was a layer. I think Patrick testified at the last meeting. That was a holdover from a much earlier plan. It was removed early on, and it just never made it off the plan.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Joe, can I ask a quick question to Mr. Lothian?
Please, go ahead.
So are there any weekend hours, Saturday, Sunday? Where have we covered that already?
Uh, this is seven days a week. So it operates seven days a week.
Seven days a week.
Yep.
Okay.
We have any other questions from the board?
So did did this affect the the way it flows out? Does that affect the way they return? Did that impact the way they return?
No. Go ahead.
It 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 doesn't affect the way they return. They're just, they would returning, be returning to this lot, uh, so they can turn left or right. As as Ms. Krimko said, there there is now the, uh, the ability to stack in a left turn lane southbound to make a left into the site if they're coming south on the east Ring Road.
So just to clarify, Alan, instead of returning to the lot here at the north entrance, they now return to the lot here at the south entrance.
Yeah.
And with the added benefit, with the added benefit, if those of them coming in from the left, they have a a left turn in, and it which direction they're coming from would obviously depend on where their deliveries were.
Correct.
I have one more question. Uh, Mr. Lothian, so was any consideration made towards the volume that Costco does on a Saturday and Sunday versus Monday from Friday in your calculations?
Uh, not Costco, but for the original approval of the, uh, of the delivery station itself, the the delivery station proper, not not this proposed, uh, parking lot. Uh, the trips generated by the proposed facility are significantly less than what was that what would be generated by the department store of the same size. So the relative, the relative difference is is negligible and actually less.
Alan, important to note for the board is the 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 vans that we're proposing to park in this area are not new trips to the site. These are the same vans that were approved under the last application. We're just proposing to park them in a different location.
Correct.
Is that correct? So these vans were coming and going into our parcel and using these ring roads and using these access roads under the last approval. This is just a matter of separating them from the employee and public parking.
Yeah, I understand that part. My concern was that, you know, Costco on a weekend is always a little bit more happen than Costco on a Monday or Tuesday. So now you've got lots more volume going around that ring road. That was just.
But it's not, but I guess, Dr. Fisher, what I'm saying is it's not more volume. It's the same volume that was approved under the main portion. These vans were coming and going around that ring road under both circumstances.
So Dave's saying that there's more volume coming from the Cos- Costco.
But but again, that was a consideration for the first application when this was approved. That is not a consideration for the fact that we're just moving where they're parking. We're not introducing new vans as part of this application.
We, I I think what they're trying to say is that you have these vans now coming from another site accessing the Ring Road more often than coming from the original parking lot. So from the original parking lot, Mr. Krimko, I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but they would just be staging and leaving. They're not accessing the, they are accessed in this.
No, that that wouldn't be exactly correct, Dr. Di Benedetto, because if you remember the testimony, the vans are parked there, but the employees who are driving them would be coming. So it's either the van is going to be circulating the ring road, or these vehicles are gonna be circulating the room. We're not bringing any more vehicles onto this ring road.
Right, but you're, you're, you're actually increasing the number of trips by the vans.
I I respectfully disagree. And Alan, if you could please explain that.
I I I think what they mean is when when it's going across the Ring Road, but again, the movement, the right turnout and and the left turn in is is not going to be, uh, a significant impact to this Ring Road. And we we don't anticipate any significant impact along that section of the Ring Road it with the proposed layout.
And with Costco or not at its busiest. You looked at Costco, it's busiest in the number of trips, and you don't foresee any problem.
Again, it, there would be more trips associated with the Sears when pre- when previously occupied as a department store than the proposed use.
I know we've discussed this already, but the impact on the weekend with Costco. Granted, I understand we're only talking about, um, parking, but just in your opinion, um, that's kind of a very busy place on the weekends. Do you see any impact, um, with this?
No, again, i- if if anything, it's providing an additional, uh, turn lane during those peaks for the vehicles to turn left towards Costco. Uh, that doesn't exist today, and it actually keeps traffic flowing along the Ring Road itself.
I would like to hear from, uh, our professionals, Mr. Higgins and Mr. Matlak. Could you, uh, do you have any input on the new?
I just did a quick calculation. What the difference will be, you're gonna have a hundred and seven vans that will be traveling from this parking lot onto the Ring Road, across the Ring Road into the staging area. Uh, and if you're looking at five twenty-minute periods, that comes up to a hundred and forty minutes. And when you break that down to vehicles per second, that means it's one vehicle per every roughly minute and a half. That would be additional on the Ring Road. And for the most part, they'll be coming out very quickly. They're making a left-hand turn and going off the Ring Road. So I don't see it as a as a major problem. It's it's if you count to to either eighty or ninety, that's like one vehicle every eighty or ninety seconds.
When you say you don't see it as a major problem, do you see it as a problem at all?
Not compared to what's what could be on that site. Because right now, there is, there's a plan for a, about a fourteen thousand square foot uh, building on that site that was approved as part of the overall Seaview Square Shopping Center. That could be built on that site. They'd have to come in and get the final engineering. But there there are plans that there's an approval for like fourteen thousand square feet of building on that parcel right now. In addition, the township's fair hair, fair share housing plan, fair hair, I'm looking at my head here, fair share housing plan is, uh, calls for there to be a substantial number of apartments built in on Seaview Square in an overlay zone. So you could also have apartments there with a lot of traffic. So I don't think there's a substantial difference.
Mr. Matlak?
Uh, well, Mr. Higgins stole my thunder a little bit. calculation, uh, got got about the same, the same, uh, time intervals. Um, I I agree that, uh, I don't think that this amount of traffic, uh, spread out the way it it's being, uh, presented is going to cause a significant, uh, traffic impact to the road. Uh, one thing I would like to see on the plans is just site triangles, uh, or a site triangle, going that there is a adequate site distance on the Ring Road for exiting the, uh, the parking lot. Uh, and I think probably just to be safe, a no-left turn sign, uh, in that island. Um, just to make sure that that it's clear. I know the the circulation, uh, of of the site that vans going into the, uh, complex to pick up the their parcels uh, makes it necessary for them to turn right, but just as an added precaution for when people are leaving, uh, the parking lot, that they're not turning left. Um, I think that that would, uh, be beneficial. Uh, and other than that, I I agree that that this, uh, site could could be a a shopping center like Mr. Higgins said, and and that would be a more significant traffic impact.
Uh, uh, anyone else have any questions from the board? Uh, how about anybody from the public? Ms. Krimko, do you have anything else to add?
I don't. I just want to thank Jim and Ben for being the heavies here and pointing out what could be developed on this site and not having it to be me. So I, uh, it is nice, and that was not even planned. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chair. I really, you know, I I I think that this is a permitted use that the traffic generated by this permitted use has already been considered by the municipality. That notwithstanding, we did take this extra step to address the board's concerns, uh, with regard to this onsite traffic, to give them a level of comfort. It did result in a plan that I think everybody can agree is a better plan than what was submitted at the last meeting. So we should all thank Mr. Duffy for that. Um, and, uh, as a result, we would ask that the board vote in favor, and we would agree to add the site triangles, add the no-left turn lanes, and to submit plans fully engineered, subject to the review and approval of both Jim and Ben.
Okay, I I'd like to move to, uh, close the public hearing. Can I get a a second?
I'll second.
Amy, can you call the roll call?
Amy fell asleep.
Mr. DiFilia?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
This is close.
Yes.
Mr. Siano? You have to make it. Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Dr. Di Benedetto?
Yes. Uh, I'd like to, uh, make a motion for a favorable, uh, approval for the parking lot, uh, with all the conditions that, uh, Mr. Matlak put in. And Mr. Higgins, um, do I get a second?
I'll second.
Is that Pete or or Dave?
I'll second it.
Pete? Pete beat you, Dave.
He wins.
Wow.
Amy?
Mr. DiFilia?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Siano?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Dr. Di Benedetto?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and I will see everybody on the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
I have a a couple of, couple of things that I want to just review for a second. We approved, uh, the meetings, uh, for the rest of the year, uh, the December twenty-seventh meeting. Uh, I have an issue with that meeting. And I think that, uh, I think once we get closer to December, I think a lot of us will have the same issues. Um, can we try and move that meeting to earlier in the month?
We we can try to move it. We may be able to put more on the November agenda and try to give everyone December off if possible.
That would be a wonderful thing.
Yeah, that's Christmas weekend, isn't it?
That is correct. I don't think we're gonna be, I don't think there'll be much. I don't know. I think we may have a problem getting a quorum for that one.
As long as the chairs there were fine, and Ed.
And then I had the, uh, the other thing I wanted to do was is I just wanted to, uh, thank, uh, Bill Fitzgerald for his, uh, service to the board and to the town. And I'm, my understanding is that I believe Sandy Brown will not be back either. And so, uh, I would like to thank him for his service to the board and to the town.
I second that, both of them. I agree.
Um, I make a motion to, uh, close the, uh, the meeting.
I'll second.
Okay.
Can we have a roll call, Amy?
Mr. DiFilia?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
This is close?
Yes.
Mr. Siano?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Chairman Di Benedetto?
Yes. See you September?
Twenty-seventh.
September twenty-seventh.